Ready? Y'all ready?
Yes, ma'am.
For call to order tonight's meeting. Thank you all for being here. If you would please silence your phones or turn them off so that we can be expeditious tonight. We have quite an aggressive agenda. Happy to have you and I don't know about y'all, but I guess we need to go home and clean the storm drains and get water and do all the good things that everybody else in the world are doing right now to prepare for the impending situation that I hope never to see again. If you would, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this day, your love, your mercy, and your grace. We thank you for everything you do for us. Now give us the wisdom and the grace to conduct the town business and we give you praise for it all in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much. Whereas I gested a few minutes ago about the impending storm, I would like for you to know that your town administration has been working constantly to prepare for as much as we can prepare for. And that means by going out and cleaning storm drains, by assessing situations, by gassing up vehicles, by acquiring the things our staffing needs, by making contacts with other emergency organizations that will be responsible for taking care of us. And I can't not start this meeting without saying, two Fridays ago on the holiday weekend, when all of us were getting off and ready for some hometown football and a wonderful three-day weekend, we had the opportunity for a microburst to occur in town, 12 trees down, 5:00. Our employees turned right around, came back, and did not stop until well into the wee hours of the morning, where they cleared streets, where they stood in the middle of the street and directed traffic because the streetlights were out. They did everything they could to restore our community to the way it was before the storm occurred. This past Friday, we had another event that our employees at 5:00 on a Friday afternoon had to respond to a shooting in town. These folks go above and beyond incessantly. They constantly put their own family second, their own issues third, and they do what needs to be done. I try really hard never to have a council meeting without expressing counsel's thanks to those folks, to the police department, to the fire department, Public Works, Parks and Rec, administration. But I'm gonna say it first tonight because I think they deserve it. They deserve to be first because they do everything we can't do for ourselves and then some. So if you would, please join me in a round of applause for this stuff. With that, council members, you have seen the minutes for the August 27th meeting. Do I have any changes, corrections, or deletions?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you. Public comment pursuant to the section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill, any resident may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign the public comment sheet prior to the start of the meeting. Do we have a public comment sheet?
Yes.
With all these people here, I'm sure somebody wants to say something. Thank you. Oh, boy. Alrighty then. Thank you for filling out the sheet. Public hearing number one. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 7360000139 located at the northeast corner of Kimbrel Road and Kimbrel Crossing Drive, near the intersection with South Carolina Highway 160 and containing 4.74 plus or minus acres. Please note that this public hearing is now open. Chris, would you like to give us any type of overview before we have, or do you want to do that at the new business portion?
I can do it now.
Okay.
Mayor, this applicant is requesting annexation in Town Limits with a zoning designation of LC, Local Commercial, for the potential development of a commercial project which would include, as proposed today, a daycare use. Based on the comprehensive plans designation of residential in this area, staff did recommend in favor of denial, and the planning commission also recommended in favor of denial of this annexation. As one final note, the applicant has requested deferral of council's consideration until the October 8th meeting, which is one month. At such time, we would need to hold another public hearing, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay. Lisa, when we get to that point, if you're so inclined, would you make a motion for the deferral at the request?
And the deferral for the annexation hearing as well as the zoning.
Yes, please. And I'm assuming those of you on Kimbrel Road, Martha Bryant and Sally Jones, are here to speak about this particular issue. Is that correct? Would you like to speak? Please state your name and your address for the purpose of our recording.
My name is Martha Bryant and I live at 1141 Kimbrel Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak against this zoning. I'll be speaking for the residents of Kimbrel Road, Kimbrel Crossing, and Kanawha Court. Please, please do not allow our residential area to be invaded by commercial property. This has been a residential community for over 100 years. Most of the people that live on Kimbrel Road or Kanawha Court have lived there 30, 40, 50 years plus. My husband's grandmother, who was the original Ms. Kimbrel, raised all of her children on that road over 100 years ago. We have spent a lifetime improving this property. We spent a lot of money on it. We're proud of that area. It's a wonderful street to live on. It's been wonderful to raise your children on. And we don't want it changed. If I am incorrect, please correct me, but I was under the impression that if you were wanting to change the zoning, it had to be posted for a certain period of time. The sign has gone up. It stayed up two days. Someone from the town came out and put it back up last, this past week. It stayed up two days. So the people in Kimbrel Crossing didn't even know about it until their homeowners' association contacted them. These people down in Kimbrel Crossing has spent $300,000 to $400,000 on these homes, and they continue to improve them. It's a gated community. They have continued to improve their property. They have put in swimming pools. They have done extensive landscaping, and they are very upset about this. And I would be too because it's right next door to my property. It's across the street from other neighbors, right, their driveway is right across the street from them. I really feel like that this street was never meant for high-volume traffic. It's a little cut-through street, but we have endured traffic for a long, long time until a bypass came, and thank goodness for that, because we can now get out of our driveway before 8:30 in the morning. It has been a real problem, but we've endured it. But we still have traffic, a lot of traffic on that street, and if you put something commercial there, it's gonna be even more traffic. You wouldn't want this in your neighborhood. I'd venture to say that none of you have, in the neighborhoods that you live in, have commercial property right in the middle of your neighborhood. You wouldn't want it, and we don't want it. I respectfully request that you consider the 92 homes that are in this area. These residents are so opposed to it, and there is only one person that's wanting this zoning changed. Thank you, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you so much. Mr. Pettit, could you address the signage for the public hearing for the annexation?
Mayor, the state law does require that a sign be posted for a period of 15 days at the property and newspaper posting for at least 15 days. We did get a call from the folks on Kimbrel Road and let us know that the sign was down, and apparently it's been down twice now. So because of that, that was one of the reasons why a subsequent public hearing would need to be held, because it would need to be reposted and posted properly pursuant to.
So we will be able to start that process over again so that there's ample opportunity, and as we are noticing this tonight, there's ample opportunity for all residents on the Kimbrel Road corridor to be able to understand what is being requested of us. Is that correct?
That's correct, and we'll reach out to the property owner and make sure that they're completely aware of the requirement that the sign must be there.
Thank you.
So that if it does go down again, we can replace it very quickly.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Jones, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. How's it going tonight? My name is Sally Jones, born and raised on 1103 Kimbrel Road, neighbors to the Bryant's. My father has, he built his house there in 1964, and he is a raised, born and raised Fort Million, A.O. Jones was my grandfather. So I guess I just have some questions because I'm looking at the minutes from July 31st, and it states on the front page that this is currently zoned RC1 RD1, unless I just don't know how to read the minutes. RC1, I do believe, covers a childcare facility, as it currently is written. Again, looking at this, it says permitted uses within the RD1 district includes single-family detached residential dwellings, a few little other things, and then child and adult care centers. So I don't know if he's wanting to truly open a daycare facility, why it would need to be rezoned, unless there's just, again, something that I don't completely understand. Going also through the minutes, I see on page 32 that you all pretty much, or everybody's in agreement on the annexation, and I don't think any of us really, because we have some other neighbors that want it to be annexed into the city. They want the, you know, opportunity to have the streetlights, maybe a sidewalk in front of their house, pay a little bit higher taxes, whatever, whatever they choose, which is, you know, fine for this gentleman if that's what he wants to do. But it also says that you disagree with it becoming an HC development because of the tr-
That would be highway commercial.
The highway commercial because of the traffic that it could impose on, and just make the congestion so much worse. But then if you flip further back on those same minutes, it looks like everybody's in agreement with the HC, so it's a little bit back on page 40.
Can I ask you a question? Are you referring to the planning commission's minutes or to the town council's minutes?
It's the town council meetings.
Okay. Has this ever been before council?
Well, maybe I'm wrong.
I believe-
Maybe it does say planning commission. It is not.
Yes, they're two entire-
So I guess it's just a little bit confusing because it's one minute, it's kind of-
Let's clear the confusion. Let's do that. The planning commission is in place to review prior to it coming to this council. Regardless of whether they approve, disapprove, they are trying to ensure that it meets the letter of the law with what's out there to frame every development. But then when it comes to us, we get a vote, yea or nay, up or down. We can do that regardless of how it comes to us. So this is an opportunity for you and the residents and the people that are interested in this project to bring their concerns before us so that we can take that into consideration. But I just wanted to make sure when you were referring to minutes that I have no knowledge of.
Well, it is-
When you say "we," I'm like, I don't remember that. I don't remember who's doing that.
And it is confusing to the, you know, to the average Joe-
Right.
-that looks at these things, and you don't really understand everything, you know, there's nowhere, and it's very hard to navigate through the town to determine what exactly LC is in the, you know-
I think you did rather well in your interpretation.
Well, I don't know. I haven't included anything on LC because I don't really know what that entails. But my biggest concern, like I say, if it's already zoned where he can have a childcare, there's no purpose to rezone. Our concern is if you make it commercial, anything can go on that street, anything from a bar-
Sure.
-to a dry cleaner, to a convenience store, and that's not what that neighborhood is about. You've already, we've already approved, the town approved to rezone the other end of Kimbrel Road, and we have 130-plus homes being built. I don't think those folks bought property on Bill Kimbrel's land to have a convenience store or any other kind of business put in front of them. So we really do hope the town will think hard and long about this decision before they move forward.
Yes, ma'am. We appreciate your input and your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further folks that have signed up? Do we have anyone else that signed up that would like to speak on this particular issue? Your name?
Nicole Cassaselli.
Okay, I see you down here. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize the street address.
Okay.
Please join us, Nicole. For the purpose of record keeping, would you give your name and your street address, please, ma'am?
Yes, my name's Nicole Cassaselli, and I live at 606 Sugarberry Court.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to start by saying I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I actually, my property backs up directly to that property. I'm on the cul-de-sac on Sugarberry, and my property backs right up to that. I didn't know anything about this until there were a bunch of men traipsing through my backyard, cutting down trees, and they were out there doing survey and stuff. And so I was like, what you doing? Why are you back here? Because there's a lot of woods between, well, you know, not a lot, but there's a good amount of trees between my house and that other house. And so I just wanted to kind of express my concern. I mean, we just purchased our property in June of 2016. We bought under the impression that we're buying at the end of this cul-de-sac. We have a nice wooded lot. Our house backs up to another home. It's nice and quiet, and you know, and then to find out that there's this possibility that they could be putting, that it could be rezoned, or they could be putting in a childcare facility or anything like that is really quite concerning to us. It's not, it's not what I signed, what I signed on for. So I did just want to kind of put our, you know, mine and my husband's concerns out there-
Sure.
-as well, and just say we really, we would really appreciate it if you guys would kind of take that into consideration as well, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All the input is appreciated. It requires a process of many people to make the decisions on how to move forward. So we'll see with the deferral what, if any, changes. And then always, we'd like for you to pay attention to when we're meeting, and we're happy to have you.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all for speaking on behalf. Yes, sir?
I'd love to speak. I've got a question. When the gentleman initially announced what this was all about, number one, I couldn't hear what he was saying. Could he reread what he read at the beginning of this process?
Mr. Pettit, could you face the audience and indicate what you gave to us at the beginning of this?
The request is to annex the property into the Town Limits with a zoning designation of LC, which is Local Commercial, which is a commercial zoning designation. As it was given to staff, the applicant doesn't intend to develop the site as a commercial project, including a daycare use. I believe that was the information. Okay, fine.
And I believe you did say that the planning commission had not recommended.
Correct. Staff did recommend against the annexation, recommended in favor of denial, and the planning commission said recommended in favor of denial of the request.
Okay. Go ahead.
And again, this is the first reading before this council, so we're gathering information, and we will continue with our process, and as I understand it, we'll have another public hearing. Thank you so much. I appreciate your patience. All right. Council, any questions? Good? All right. Public hearing number two. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the Town of Fort Mill, Article II, Requirements by District, Section 8, LC, Local Commercial District, so as to add childcare centers as a conditional use. Add requirements for landscaping, sidewalks, and traffic studies for new development, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Consider this public hearing open. Mr. Pettit, would you like to?
Yes, mayor, this request was originally kind of tied to the first public hearing in that when the applicant originally came to us, they were requesting a zoning designation of highway commercial. The reasoning really behind that was because the intent is to develop a daycare center, which a daycare center was not a permitted use in local commercial. At the planning commission meeting, there was a lot of concern moving the property forward with highway commercial. That's a more intense commercial zoning district that allows a wider variety of commercial uses. Because of that, the planning commission requested that staff develop this text amendment to allow daycare centers within the local commercial district, excuse me, which is a less intensive district. And so staff did so and really took the conditions that are found in the draft UDO as well as as much of the other information and requirements of the UDO as possible to develop this text amendment for that district. And with that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
What zoning does a care center reside under right now?
It's permitted in the highway commercial district. It's also permitted, I believe, in some of the residential districts.
Are there characteristics between a daycare that's in a home that you have to register for if you have over X amount of children, and then the public daycare that would be like the one in Baxter that's Field Dreams, that's a much larger operation?
They both are regulated through the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control, so we do have within their requirements that they provide us information showing that they are certainly registered with those folks. But also, there are conditions related to the location of outdoor play areas and the requirement that those be fenced for the safety of the children, and also hours of outdoor play activities, again, to kind of limit the noise from the outside, and also conditions related to the vehicular circulation and drop-off within the site to make sure there's no traffic issues. And so those are the conditions specific to childcare centers, but staff did take this as an opportunity to take as much from the UDO as possible and insert it into the local commercial district. So we do have enhanced requirements for buffers and streetscapes and TIA's and sidewalks, really taking as much as we could from the UDO and putting it into this text amendment.
For those of you that aren't regular attendees of our meetings for the last two and a half years, UDO stands for Unified Development Ordinance, and it is to take all of the ordinances we've had since the hundred years ago and to look at them based on today's usage and make them certainly much more simple. And as you can see, we have daycare available in several of the zonings. So this will hopefully, this year, right? This year, we're gonna finish that puppy, and we're gonna have something in place that's much easier for all of us to understand and to use. So it is an effort to make it better. It is to go from highway commercial to local commercial, as Mr. Pettit has indicated, is less intense building, less, larger development, to try to, you know, make sure that it's consistent with what area it's being located in. So we are working towards that. Our staff has been working on that for well over two years. So I'm hoping that by the end of this year, our 337-page document will give birth to it, right?
Correct. And just as an FYI, this, again, was tied to the first item, and staff did recommend in favor of this text amendment, and the planning commission did as well.
Okay.
But that's not specific for just this?
It's not specific just to-
This is for all ordinances.
This is just a house cleaning. This is house cleaning on our side-
Yes.
-so that this comes apart.
And ultimately-
It has no reflectant upon the first item.
Correct. And ultimately, if the UDO is passed next month, this information that went into this text amendment would be adopted through the UDO.
And I think, I think fellow council members bring forward very important information, add requirements for landscaping, sidewalks, and traffic studies. Over the course of the last several years, we have gotten a lot better at making those requirements to each and every one that appears before us with a change that they would like to make within our community. I had a gentleman, David Stuber, on Sugarberry Court that, did you, it's Mr. Stuber. Did you want to speak on the-
I mean, I don't have anything to add unless it's said.
Sure. I just didn't want to overlook you. And I just looked down and saw Sugarberry was the same street. So you're good?
I mean, I would urge you to vote to deny it, just as my neighbors have, I'm concerned with traffic, property decline, property value, and just what it's gonna do to the value of our neighborhood.
Virginia, for the purposes of documentation, that was Mr. David Stuber, S-T-U-B-E-R.
Daniel.
Daniel. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. 615 Sugarberry Court, and that's here in Fort Mill. Okay. Thank you. With that, we're gonna close public hearing number two. Public hearing number three. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County Tax Map Number 02013101514, 0201301513, and 0201301075, containing approximately 34.17 plus or minus acres located off Fort Mill Parkway from GI, General Industrial, and MXU, Mixed Use, to R15 Residential. Mr. Pettit, would you like to give a brief overview?
Yes, mayor, this property is currently owned by the former school district, and the intent is to develop as a future school site. The request for rezoning is to bring the three properties into consistency with each other as far as the zoning so that they can be recombined into one parcel. And this request also would bring those properties into compliance with the zoning designation that we have for most other school sites.
Are most other school sites R15?
They're either R15 or the R10. And with the UDO, the recommendation is to move all school sites to R15.
Would it not be prudent to have a designation that's specific to the public housing of students and not one that would open ourselves up to additional homes?
It could be, and certainly we could move forward with that.
I trust the school district, but I would feel a lot more comfortable if indeed something occurred, they didn't build a school there, and we had left it, we had taken it out of the very dis, the very zoning that we need, general industrial, mixed-use and commercial tax base, and changed it into residential. I would like to have a opportunity to create what's more specific to the issue at hand. Council members, do you agree?
Yeah.
Can they not build a school in highway commercial?
Yeah, let's-
I'm sorry, what did Rodney say?
Can they not build a school in highway commercial?
They can develop a school in highway commercial. The, they can develop a school, I believe, in certainly a mixed use. I don't believe they can do that in an industrial district. But we can certainly, either at this time or with the UDO, because with the UDO ultimately, we'll have to take another look at all properties.
We'll do further discussion in the actual new business item, as I-
Okay.
All right. We're closing public hearing number three. Public hearing number four. An ordinance annexing York County Tax Map Number 653000210 located at the southwest corner of Pleasant Road and Whitley Road, containing approximately 7.30 plus or minus acres. Consider this public hearing open, and I believe Melanie Stone and, is it Carolyn Stone?
Carolyn.
From Whitley Mills have signed up to speak.
Um-
Which wants which?
I'm Melanie. This is my daughter, Carolyn.
Hi, Carolyn.
We initially came because Carolyn had some concerns, but she would like me to speak first. Um-
Good for you, Carolyn. That's wonderful.
We live on, our property is on the, our lot backs up to our common area, which backs up to the proposed property. And then Carolyn and her younger brother go to school across the street at Pleasant and Elementary. We understand that development is coming to Fort Mill. Our concerns about this, the potential plan for this lot in particular, are that the traffic in the morning is crazy. If I may, I brought a few copies of a letter from the crossing guard. May I bring it to you?
Sure.
Okay. I just made three copies. I didn't know how many.
We will be happy to copy and share.
She's been in the crossing guard for the last three years, so she kind of speaks to the increased volume. My son and I were almost hit crossing the road in the afternoon, just with the way the elevation of the road goes up northbound and the light placement for the flashing lights. It's pretty bad. That corner in particular, people turning to go left or right with all of the cars going to the middle school and the elementary school. It's crazy in the morning, and that's- And that's one of the reasons we walk, even on bad weather days, because it's gonna take me 20 minutes to go less than half a mile to drop my kids off. So it's really quick in the morning. So anyway, I know that one of the, I believe, one of the requirements is that you do a traffic impact analysis. I would just, I don't know how that's done, but that it, somebody come out and actually be there in the morning. Because having 65 families, that could be 130 more cars in the morning. I've also heard rumors about Pleasant Road being widened at some point. And if this development does go in, there's not gonna be enough room for that to happen unless you take some of the... I mean, it's just, it's very narrow there, but I've heard that it's gonna be four lanes. And there's not gonna be enough room to make that happen there if this property is developed the way it's planning to be. Currently, Pleasant Knoll is taking overflow students from TUK, so I just would, you know, wanna encourage you guys that there be infrastructure in place before anything is built. And lastly, we would, even though we understand it has to be developed, we would love to see less homes just because of the traffic and what Carolyn wants to speak to, which is the nature and the animal, so.
Can Carolyn speak?
Yeah, I just wanna say one more thing. I've been made aware that some of the neighbors have already experienced some flooding issues from Brayden, a community that was developed in the county. Both, there's streams that, you know, kind of go on both sides of the property. But again, there's also the concern of flooding, since there is a stream on both sides, and we're already seeing an impact from Brayden. So, you want me to hold your signs?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
If you must build on this land, please build less homes and leave a natural area for the animals. The trees help us breathe and is helpful for the animals.
Do you want to say anything else? Do you want to talk about the animals we've seen or the... Anything else?
Yeah. There are lots of animals who live on this land. We have seen their tracks in the creek area. The animals need their home. We have seen deer, raccoon, turtle, bunnies, squirrels, birds, bats, and frogs.
Hold on. Do you want to say anything else?
We have helped animals. We've saved them by putting them back in the woods. We've saved a scared...
A baby.
We saved a baby bunny and a squirrel. And I love to copy drawing nature. It's just one of the pictures I show.
Excellent. Whoa, 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 Carolyn. Thank you for paying attention to the things that occur around where you live and to have the courage to speak up about it. I think that's very special.
Thank you for being so...
Very, very proud of you.
She's doing it for the animals.
That's wonderful.
Fair, having a little girl.
We got Larry in tears now.
I was waiting for her to pull out a bunny.
Thank you both. All right.
Are we able to ask a question in regards to that? We didn't get ahead of time.
You didn't get in time to sign in. If you have a question, please pose the question.
My only question is around mixed use, why it needs to be changed to mixed use. I believe there was some guidelines established for builders around lot sizes. And I guess I'm trying to understand why it would need to go to mixed use versus residential.
Chris, would you like to address that?
Yes, Mayor. As we've sort of seen with some other annexations that are connected to existing MXU, mixed-use approvals, we brought those in as MXU really just to allow for consistency between the two projects. And I'll pull up on the screen here. This is actually for the next public hearing on the mixed-use plan, but the project to the south that's grayed out, that's already an existing approved project that's zoned MXU. So with this, it's really an extension of the...
Continuation of that project.
It's a continuation of the MXU district, which just simply allowed for the consistency.
Okay. Did that answer your question, ma'am? Did that answer your question?
I guess partially. I mean, that's townhomes, if I recall correctly, because I was at the meeting two years ago when those got approved. And townhomes would be mixed use, right? Because they're connected. But from a home situation perspective, which is the lot of the corner of Pleasant and Whitley, is mixed use allowing them to build more houses on a smaller amount of land versus going by the code that was passed for the acre lots?
I believe we would be consistent with whatever was allowed within that particular code. I don't know that that's answering your question specifically.
So they don't go by the rules today? It goes by what's in the written in the past?
They go by the rules, period. They go by the rules. If there's any grandfathering, that's still by the rules. But in this case, what they've done is take the specific properties in gray that were already approved when you indicated you were here before, and they've added that to make a larger development and wanted it to be consistently zoned, so that with contiguous property lines, they would all be zoned the same. Chris, did I answer that correctly?
That is generally correct, yes, ma'am.
Can I ask a question too?
Sure.
Okay. And it might, I don't know who to direct it to, but I believe on the grayed out piece of property, I think there are certain requirements already in place about other improvements that have to be done for traffic flow and such before they can be built. Mr. Pettit, are you able to confirm that? The improvements to Gold Hill and I-77?
Yes, the portion that's grayed out is part of the Pleasant Vista MXU project, which is a much larger piece that encompasses just this and a lot of acreage on the other side of Pleasant. And part of that approval a few years back was that only a certain amount of the residential development would be allowed until such time that the Gold Hill interchange was completed and a few other projects. This piece that's grayed out on the screen that we're kind of discussing here was not included in that portion of the project. So the vast majority of the residential was not allowed until those triggers were hit. This piece was not included in that.
Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, I think I have, yeah, more of a... I wasn't sure if this, if this is approved, if this could be built immediately, which again, with the traffic concerns we have, is kind of tied into that.
My understanding is that the I-77 Gold Hill Exchange will actually begin in late this year.
Oh, well, okay.
So, and another thing you brought up earlier that I didn't confirm, it is definitely on long-range plans to widen Pleasant Road. Whether that happens in my lifetime or not, I'm not so sure. But it's out there.
I'm not sure how this neighborhood can be built if that's in the plan.
Right.
Just with the... I mean, we've walked this lot, I mean, in the winter, we walk around back there in the creek, and we've walked all through there. And I just, with the 25-foot buffer between the back of the house and the... I just, I'm not sure how that's gonna happen.
I think it behooves us to share that with everything, we're working to become better at how we zone and what we approve and what we don't. And I can tell you, having been on council 14 years, we are so much further into ensuring that we get more information and that we require more, that it doesn't behoove us to allow people to break the rules. We need to have rules that are consistent and rules that are applicable and are doable. We can't enforce rules that aren't. And I don't think any investor wants to get into something and start building and putting a lot of money into it if it's not gonna work. So there's many hands, unfortunately, in this bowl soup. So, you know, we are just now having the public hearing, and we will certainly take all of your interests and concerns to heart. Thank you. Last question, because this isn't really supposed to be a question and answer, but last question.
I apologize for...
No, you're all right.
Just to add on, I actually live in the cul-de-sac in that neighborhood. And I'm not sure if this would interest you, but I took a picture on Monday when I was actually driving my kids to school, and it's literally a wall of cars that people are not moving.
My daughter lives in Whitley Mills, and I'm there frequently, so I understand. I understand. I might have to recuse myself eventually, but I've been in and out of your neighborhood every hour of the day, and it is the site of an entrance to a development that's also right at the entrance to two schools. So let us see what we can do about working to see what we need to do, please, and thank you. I appreciate all of your comments. I think you're getting in under the wire, ma'am. I said last question, but you're being pretty pleasant here.
The blue area, is that going to be a swimming pool or is that going to be a lake?
It's likely to be a...
You can see the Whitley Mills pool.
It's likely to be a pond of...
Okay.
A retention pond.
Oh, okay. In South Carolina, there is a law that says I cannot dump water on my neighbor's yard.
That's true.
They are going to be damming up the creek to make that?
No, ma'am.
Is that correct?
No, ma'am. We have that gentleman right there with the green stickers sticking out of his pocket. Believe it or not, we searched high and low to find someone of his credential to come in. He's an engineer in stormwater, and he's a teller of the hun when it comes to that kind of thing. No, no, ma'am. We would not be able to do that, I don't believe, under South Carolina law, anyway. So, but his name's Greg, and he does a fine job, so I think he will, he'll be the guy to watch. All right, we're gonna close this particular one. Thank you all for your patience and the concerns that you bring to the table. Public hearing number six, an ordinance to adopt the budget for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October the first, 2018, and ending September the 30th, 2019.
Mayor, we skipped public hearing item number five?
Did I? I checked it off. I was being overeager. An ordinance, sorry, public hearing number five, an ordinance adopting a mixed-use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant-Whitley MXU project. I'm sorry, I saw Whitley and... Do we have anyone? I think I have everyone checked off on the sign-in sheet as having spoken, and then a few.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. All right, hearing none. Now we can move. I told you it was okay to move to six. An ordinance to adopt the budget for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October the first, 2018, and ending September the 30th, 2019. This is Shante Bowler. She holds the checkbook.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We come tonight bringing you a combined budget for all funds of $59,723,498. This is an increase over last year of $11.7 million, or about 24.5%. Those are our collective numbers, but by fund, our general fund budget is $20,484,602. Our gross revenue fund, which is our utility fund, is $22,46,515. Our stormwater utility fund is $955,381. Our capital projects fund is $10,225,000. Hospitality tax, $840,000. Accommodations tax, $604,000. Fire protection impact fee, $803,000. Municipal facilities impact fee, $298,000. And our parks and recreation impact fee is $3467,000, which gives us the total of the Basically, what we would like to share, some of the contributing factors, some of the contributing factors in the way of revenue is that our property taxes are up by $945,000. Our building permits by $100,000. Our business licenses by $200,000. And our garbage revenue by $200,000, which also includes a recommendation of $1 for our garbage rate going from $18 to $19 per month. And then this is our second full round of revenue from the state regarding the equipment rental surcharge, and that is up by $800,000. We are not recommending a millage increase for the 2019 budget. Last year, it was 86 mills. We are recommending 86 mills for 2019. Wanted to give you just a little bit of history there in terms of where our millage has had change. We have been carrying 86 mills since the 2009, 2010 fiscal year. Prior to that, 86, it was 81 mills.
Everybody get that? We haven't raised taxes or taxed millage in quite some time, but yet we've increased the service that we provide. And again, hats off to our staff members for doing the heavy lifting on that.
Okay, concerning our expenditures, they do balance with our revenues at $20,484,602. Some of the items that are driving the expenses, we do have 12 new full-time positions in the budget. We have also a 3% cost of living increase for all employees. And then we have a 1% merit-based increase. Additionally, we have, for the first time, code enforcement abatement in our budget, estimated at $20,000. A new compensation study at $35,000. Impact fee study of $55,000. And festivities of $92,750. Technology of $320,300. Machinery and equipments at $445,620. 12 new vehicles at $448,400. And then other outlay of $734,000. And we will be carrying in our contingency line item, $919,784. And that is to be used for things that are unforeseen. If we do not use that, it will roll into our fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. If we move on to our gross revenue fund, we are projecting revenues at $22,46,515, which is an increase of $8.4 million. We are expecting our water sales to go up by $643,000, and our sewer sales at $691,000. We are looking to issue some new debt this year to help fund the Phase Two of the wastewater plant upgrade, as well as a meter project that's going to be about $2.5 million, and the treatment plant upgrade is going to be about $42 million. We will issue that new debt, but this is the portion of it that will be reflected in the 1819 budget. We are recommending a 7.5% increase in our water and sewer rates, and that comes in part to help position ourselves to be able to pay back the new debt. Also, our expenditures do balance with our revenues. Some of the items in that budget, we do have two new full-time positions there. The 3% cost of living and the 1% merit apply to our employees in this fund as well. We have equipment at $145,000. Vehicles at $81,000. The water meter project that I just spoke about is $2.5 million. And then other outlay is $9.6 million. That has to do with the part of the treatment plant upgrade that will be funded in 1819, as well as the bank street, bath street water line.
There you go.
And then we're carrying a contingency of about $45,000 there.
Can I ask a question? We, you and I discussed the other day about the TAP fees.
Yes, sir.
Were you able to find any research or anything out about that or that, where we needed? When was the last time about, as far as updating the study?
I am still looking for the last time that we increased those. I have not yet gotten that date, but we are looking and searching for it for you.
When do you think we can get that?
But it has been several years since we had it.
Before we adopt the budget, you think we can have that? Just so we can have it available?
We will try our best to have that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our stormwater... Moving on to our stormwater utility fund. That budget, its revenues are projected at $955,381. Our fees, $710,000. And then, for other miscellaneous revenues, $5,525. We are looking to utilize fund balance. And for those of you who don't know what that is, we are looking to dip into our savings to help fund this year's budget to the tune of $239,000. Our expenditures include the 3% cost of living, the 1% merit, and two new full-time employees in this particular budget. And one large ticket item is the MS4 permitting. And I would have to defer to Greg to explain what that really is.
We're just, our permit is up this year. We're cycling into a new permit. And most of that is going consultant and to deal with the audit that DHA will be running this through during that process.
Okay. Okay. Equipment needs are at $75,000. One vehicle has been recommended at $25,000, and we do carry contingency here of $50,000 as well. Concerning capital projects, our revenues are $10,225. We're increasing $1.1 million over last year. For the most part, our revenues will be coming from the fund balance appropriation, which is $5 million. And then, from our special revenue funds transfers that are coming in to help fund some of these projects. We do expect to get about $10,000 from the mausoleum sales and about $3,000 in interest income. The projects that make up that $10,000, $10 million, Waterside Park prep work, $500,000. Walter Elysha Park improvements, $400,000. Dobie's Bridge Park improvements, $1 million. The amphitheater, $2.2 million. The fire station, $3.8 million. The CMAG local matches for the sidewalks project that we are partnering with DOT to do is $225,000. And then, miscellaneous sidewalks projects locally that whatever council might desire to have looked at, we plugged in $100,000 for that. And then, our recreational facilities improvements is at $2 million. And that totals our $10 million. If we move on to our special revenue funds, our total projected income is $840,000, which is a decrease from last year because that fund also utilized some fund balance appropriation last year that it is not using this year. So, we're expecting to get $840,000 in taxes. We are expecting to transfer those funds out. $200,34 to the general fund to help with the South Carolina Strawberry Festival expense. And then, $633,000 will go to the capital projects fund as a transfer. And then, we have about $7,000 that is undesignedated at this time. Moving on to our account accommodations tax, we are projecting revenues at $384,000. At this time, that $384,000 is undesignedated. So, we will look to see how council best would rather this money be earmarked. Moving on to our state accommodations tax. As you know, or maybe you do not know, we are bound by a formula that the state puts, gives us on how these monies are to be distributed. We are projecting that we will receive $220,000 from the state and advertising $58,500 for tourism, $126,750. We are using the York County Conventions Visitors Bureau as our entity for the tourism-related activity. And then, the transfer to the general fund that is allowed, those are monies that we are able to use through our general fund in whichever way we choose. So, basically, the state funds net out. We receive it and then we disperse it. Thank you, Chris. Moving on to our impact fees, we're projecting revenues of $803,000 in our fire impact fees. We are looking at utilizing part of that being fund balance of $687,000. And then, we're looking to transfer the entire $803,000 over to capital projects to help with those projects there. For our municipal facilities, impact fees, we are projecting $298,000, expecting to transfer over to the capital projects fund, $298,000. And then, for our recreation impact fees, we are projecting income of $3,467,000 with $2,490,000 being from fund balance. And then, transferring the entire $3.4 million into our capital projects fund. This ends our presentation, Mayor.
Thank you.
Questions of council?
Entertain any questions for Shontae?
You all have the big version of this. And if you feel between now and then, this will serve as first, the public hearing and first reading. So, if you have questions that we can answer for you between now and second reading, we will be happy to do that.
I think if we're going to have this serve as a first reading, I'll need a motion and a second and a vote.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, but can we do it now and not have to?
We'll do it based on the evening.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shontae. For those of you that are unaware, while Shontae heads up the effort for our budget, every town employee participates in determining what we spend, how we spend it, and is it needed? We do work on the premise of, is it needed? This council has spent many an hour looking at every request, every possible scenario on how to make our money go as far as we can and do what's right for the entire community. I hope you noted on the capital improvements page that we're very excited to make some changes within the community that we think will be very welcome. We're pretty happy about it, but it doesn't happen without a lot of effort. So, thanks to each and every one of you for your efforts along these lines.
Also, since we've had Shontae, I mean, I think we need to point out once again that when we were audited this year, we received the highest possible rating you could get.
Rare. Rare. They said that very, very few of those ever existed. So, thank you and your staff. Okay, presentation number one. Proclamation for Constitution Day and Constitution Week to be presented to the Daughters of the Revolutionary War. Do we have someone here?
Yes.
This evening? Would you like to come up?
Sure.
Can I be here?
Up here.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm gonna have to read this.
All right. And you are Tracy Dixon?
Hi, Tracy. Nice to see you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. Nation 4 DAR appreciates your proclamation honoring this important document, the Constitution, in our nation's history. The DAR also sponsors an initiative known as Bells Across America, which encourages church and school bells tolled 13 times at 4 o'clock Eastern Time on September 17. As a fun addition this year, Nation 4 Chapter of the DAR would like anyone and everyone to set their cell phone alarms to go off at 4:00 PM with the classic bell tower ring tone for iPhones or a church bell ring tone on other type phones. Please spread the word and let's see how many bells will ring. We do hope that everyone in Fort Mill does take the time to read and familiarize themselves with the Constitution and to share it with others as well. We hope people will join us and together, let's rock the Constitution.
Let's put my glasses on so I won't mess this up. Town of Fort Mill, South Carolina, proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government, inter-republic, dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17, 2018, marks the 231st anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America at the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Gwen Savage, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor in the city of Fort Mill, South Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and the day of September 17, 2018, as Constitution Day. And ask that our citizens reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the state of the city to be affixed this 10th day of September in the year of our Lord, 2018. That's almost written like it would have been back then. Thank you so much because I think, in my own opinion, I know these guys, some of them will share it, but I don't think there's enough these days said about the Constitution and civics.
Yes.
And I think it's extremely important, the work that this organization does, to help remind us all what a benefit it is to live here and our responsibility in honoring the freedoms that we do so enjoy.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're my sound technician here. I tried to talk loud. All righty then, we're on a roll. Old Business Items, Old Business Item Number One, Second Reading, Ordinance relating to the recovery of collection costs as a part of delinquent debts collected pursuant to the Set Off Debt Collection Act. Shontae Bowler, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept Old Business Item Number One.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Do we need any discussion on this, Shontae?
Okay, I was trying to find you, ma'am. No, ma'am. Basically, this is the ordinance that was presented to council last meeting. And of course, we have to have two readings today. We'll send a second reading. But it is necessary for us to have this happen so that we can get these documents back to the municipal association and be in compliance to be able to continue utilizing them as our agent through the Set Off Debt Program.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions of Shontae? All right. We have had a vote and it was unanimous yea. Thank you so much. Thank you, Shontae. Go out and get that money collected. New Business Item Number One, First Reading, An Ordinance Annexing York County Tax Map Number 736000139, located at the northeast corner of Kimball Road and Kimball Crossing Drive, near the intersection of South Carolina Highway 160 and containing approximately 4.74 plus or minus acres. This is Ward Three, Mr. Huntley, and Chris Pettit is our resident expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we defer first, New Business Item Number One, to the October 8th meeting.
I have a motion to defer and a second. Are there any questions in regards to this that we talked about earlier this evening? No? Hearing none. All those in favor of deferring this to the October meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.
And that's October 8?
Yes. Thank you. New Business Item Number Two, First Reading, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Ordinance for the town of Fort Mill, Article II, Requirements by District, Section Eight, Local Commercial Districts, so as to add childcare centers as a conditional use. Add requirements for landscaping sidewalks and traffic studies for new development and to provide for further, other matters relating thereto. Chris Pettit is our expert, so.
I make a motion to accept Business, New Business Item Number Two.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. New Business Item Number Three, First Reading, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Map of the town of Fort Mill so as to change the zoning designation for York County Tax Map Number 0201301514513 and 0201301075, containing approximately 34.17 plus or minus acres, located off Fort Mill Parkway from GI, General Industrial, and Mixed Use to the R15 Residential Ward Four. Mr. Moody, Chris Pettit is our expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept New Business Item Number Three.
Have a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Questions?
Again, Chris, we started discussing this on during the public hearing, but this is the school district's property. And as of right now, every other school district property in the town ordinance is zoned to R15?
I want to say all. I believe all but one is zoned either R10 or R15. And with the UDO, just kind of as a carryover of that, staff was recommending that all schools be transitioned over to R15, which was the basis behind choosing that zoning designation for this request. And in the UDO, I mean, most of those, 90 something percent of those or almost all of them would be existing schools. So, you'd be zoning an existing school to an R15 district. There are a few sites that are undeveloped that are owned by the school district for future sites that would be zoned to that.
Yeah, I would say I agree with the mayor and the precedence that it sets that the school districts' property that they own were actually changing from commercial to residential, which is what they are highly and very vocally against. So, it seems like contradiction in how we're zoning things. So, you know, I would certainly like to make a motion, or at least a suggestion, before we move forward on the UDO, that we look at other opportunities in zoning for school districts besides an R15.
Something that would linger as public use rather than turn into, if a school were to be demolished, I'd like some opportunity to reconsider rather than it automatically to become residential. It's a lot of land, if you look at it. And I don't think it's ever been their intent
No.
for it to become residential. So, if we could better accommodate something that's not conflicting, I think that would be better.
Plus, they buy so much property so far in advance to try to get ahead of the needs they have that they're not necessarily going to be potentially using them all. There's a chance they could need to sell it off, and we don't want it to be sold off as residential without a change.
Well, they don't come to us to change the zoning though until they, that's, they're actually building the school on there now. I think the property that they're sitting on, I mean, it's like a mix, a mix of residential designations. I don't think this is all R15. There's like Mixed Use. There's some industrial. I guess I'll make an amendment to my new motion. I'll make a new motion to accept New Business Item Number Three with the contingency that Chris comes up with a new designation for the school sites.
Second.
As an SE1 or whatever.
Can I get some clarification as to when you would like to have that?
Prior to us voting into the UDO.
Okay. So, to clarify, you're recommending, or you're approving First Reading of the rezoning to R15, but you're requesting that staff look at this issue with the UDO and to come up with a different solution in the UDO?
Yes.
Okay.
But you will adopt it under R15 under your motion?
Yes.
At second reading?
Everybody understand? We're all good? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you. Oops, I got a nay. Okay?
Reason being, explanation, if we change it to 15, they will have to bring it back to us to change it any other way, correct?
We'll change it in the UDO.
Change it in the UDO once the UDO gets voted in.
I mean, we could automatically do that? Okay. I'll agree.
He rescends his nay.
I didn't have a chance to say anything before we cut the room.
Jump in there.
I was trying.
New Business Item Number Four. That's right, right? First Reading, An Ordinance Annexing York County Tax Map Number 736000139,
Second.
Okay. Alright, Chris, would you like to say anything else about this that wasn't said earlier in the public hearing?
Mayor, so New Business Item Number Five, Four and Five, excuse me, are tied together. So Number Four is the annexation of the property and Number Five is a request for approval of the concept plan and development conditions. So with mixed-use projects, they're required to come in both with a concept plan and development conditions tied to what they can do and how they must do that. And on the screen here is the concept plan, just briefly going to introduce Number Six as, or Five as well. So the requested concept plan and development conditions would allow up to 51 town home units, or actually up to 51 residential units. I don't think it specifies it has to be townhomes. I believe it states either townhomes or single-family. On the property, it equates to about 6.9 units per acre. The comprehensive plan recommends in the series three to five units per acre. Through the development conditions though, it's noted that these 51 units would be developed in conjunction with the property to the south there that's grayed out, that's already approved for a townhome project. With that intent, when you look at the total project as a whole, the density has then decreased to 5.4 units per acre. In addition to that, staff did work with the developer to mimic the development conditions that were required of the Pleasant Vista project, which is the grayed out portion and the majority of Pleasant Road on the other side. And those development conditions were enhanced conditions, enhanced requirements for items such as landscaping, buffers, and sidewalks. Those were the items that we kind of spoke about previously, that we were developing consistency with this request and the already approved project that's grayed out there. Because of those enhanced requirements, staff did recommend in favor of approval, the planning commission, in their review of this request, they were concerned with the density and some of the lack of open space, usable open space. Because of that, they recommended a modification to the development conditions to require that additional property either be donated to the Nation Fort Land Trust or developed as a usable amenity. So you'll see within the development conditions, there is some new language to that effect, basically speaking about the area down here, which is the power line easement and that south of it, oops, excuse me. To either be donated in whole or part to the Nation Fort Land Trust who already owns all of this property to be used for their uses, or to be, if the Nation Fort Land Trust does not want all or part of that, to then be developed as a usable amenity for the development. And with that modification, the planning commission did recommend in favor of approval.
So why did that make it approvable to the planning commission and into staff?
Because of the request being slightly above the comprehensive plans recommended to five units per acre, typically the planning commission will want to see something enhanced. So we did have the enhanced requirements for the landscaping, the buffers, the sidewalks. There is a benefit to the project actually being developed in conjunction with the already approved project because you then have multiple access points as to if these were developed separately, you would only have one, you wouldn't necessarily have the connection. So from a traffic flow perspective, it's enhanced from emergency access perspective, it's enhanced. And the planning commission is, one of their things that they're very big about is usable open space. Our UDO will require that any new development, 50% of the open space is usable, as opposed to being steep slopes and
Ditches.
Areas, ditches.
We've had our share of ditches.
That'll provide a place for kids to go play. So the planning commission, in their view, wanted the applicant to provide that enhanced quality for the development and the applicant has agreed to do that.
I have two questions. And one, do we have traffic study available on Pleasant Road?
There's not a traffic study today for this project, but one would be required.
Before final approval?
Before, before staff could approve the actual development moving forward.
Okay. Second, the free space, maybe it's just because I don't see well anymore, but you can't put anything under a power line, so the power line corridor would not be free space, correct?
Correct. I mean, you certainly can't develop structures, there's a limited number of things that you can do, but the intent would be to, the first intent would be to donate this property to the Nation Fort Land Trust. Again, they already have this property here for the future development of their trail network. If the Nation Fort Land Trust did not want all or part of that, then the requirement through the development conditions would be that a usable amenity would be developed. And that could be anything from simply a place to go gathering
Catch bunnies?
Catch bunnies and throw a football, or it could include some sort of structure down here, a shelter or something like that.
So you're actually talking about the right-of-way and where your cursor's sitting right now?
Correct.
Okay.
This entire
So it's not just the right-of-way?
Not just the right-of-way.
Yeah, I need clarity on that.
So the only open space in this whole concept is the pocket park, I guess?
There's, well, the open space includes the landscape buffers along Pleasant, which would include a sidewalk along Whitley as well. And the open space also includes required 35-foot buffer off of the Whitley Mills subdivision and in this area here, the, one of the things that was noted at the planning commission was really the usable open space that you might say was kind of this pocket park where you could kind of go out and have kids play.
And how big is the pocket park?
I could not tell you.
What's the estimate of the pocket park?
Looks like about three of those things?
Fifty by fifty.
Fifty by fifty?
And does this current plan take into consideration the expansion of Pleasant Road as was brought up in the public hearing?
It does, it does have an enhanced kind of setback off of Pleasant that would, in the future, should Pleasant be widened, provide for an opportunity to widen that. As opposed to take structures down, you'd be requiring what is
Buffers. The buffer that we're requiring.
A buffer and a sidewalk that, you know
That we're requiring. So just to reiterate, the buffer and the sidewalk that we're requiring really could go away once Pleasant Road is expanded?
It could. It could upon that expansion.
There's an option.
It would depend on the right-of-way acquisition possibly.
And I understand the, trying to make the grayed-out area and the colored area match together with the concept that you're putting together, but we heard earlier about the access on Gold Hill Road and the exit, that still isn't included in this agreement, correct? That's not been added to it.
There is, there is not anything in this development condition that sets a trigger for when it could be developed, which I believe is
Yeah, I think Sam mentioned earlier, the gray part was not included in Mr. Willis's commitment on the other side of the road to
But the gray part is identified as townhomes, correct?
Correct.
But the upper part is not, it's designated as townhomes and/or single-family homes? I think I'd like to see it pick one or the other?
The, you're correct in that the upper part, we, the development conditions were written to not necessarily say it had to be townhomes, but it did give the option for single-family.
So being a resident of Massey, which was originally supposed to be mixed-use but ended up being all residential and no commercial, are there intentions for this to have any commercial piece to it?
Not this
Or is it to, yeah, so even though it's mixed-use, we're only doing mixed-use because that's what the other property was? Trying to understand why we're not designating it with a residential component.
What, there, so you're correct in that it's mixed-use, but it doesn't in and of itself have a mixture of uses, it is solely residential. One of the reasons staff recommended to the applicant mixed-use was that the mixed-use designation actually allows staff and council a little more control over what happens because you do have the development conditions and concept plan that has to come before you for approval, whereas if they were requesting simply a townhome designation, RT8, they would come before you for the zoning piece of it, but you would not get another opportunity to review it and then be a by-right use of the property. So with the mixed-use, there's a little more teeth in enhancing the quality through the development conditions and bringing it before you as a concept plan to review. So because of that, that's why we, staff, recommended the mixed-use district.
What were other alternatives to be recommended other than mixed-use?
As a townhome project, we do have today an RT4, which is up to four units an acre, RT8, which is eight units, so, and an RT12. So those would be, for a townhome project, the alternatives outside of mixed-use.
Why didn't staff just recommend one of those if they're just going to put majority of townhomes, you think?
This, the mixed-use district allows more control from a staff and council perspective because you do have the required development conditions where we were able to sort of negotiate with the applicant on the enhancements, whereas if it was a by-right zoning, so long as they met the zoning requirements, there'd be no negotiation or no enhancements that we could require of them above and beyond what's strictly in the district.
So do we have a development agreement with Mr. Willis?
We do not, we have a mixed-use plan
So just a designation, not a development agreement? Right, thank you.
Question, do you happen to remember in the last Pennies presentation in Brown since you're here and serve on that board, what capacity were we at on, for Pennies for Pleasant Road?
If I can answer this, I'm pretty sure I remember back that Pennies was looking at north of Gold Hill Road toward Kirwin's Boulevard and that section of Pleasant Road, not on that southern end. Between Gold Hill and 160.
Okay. To begin with, for first phase, I was thinking second phase.
Yeah, I think RFAAS has it full at some point in the distant future.
Very distant.
And another point that was brought up in the public hearing, which got me thinking a lot of things, how often, I didn't realize Braden off of Gold Hill, I mean off of 160 backed up to this property. I guess I'm a little naive in how big that community is. But brings up a good point to me, how well are we communicating with the county and aligning our properties when county butts up to, county development butts up to a town development?
Braden doesn't, I don't believe Braden
It doesn't touch.
Technically touches, but I think that what was discussed was there were some flooding concerns because of the development of Braden, so I think they share some creeks that ultimately for this property perhaps. But we certainly do coordinate with the county and the county has an opportunity to look at all of our staff reports and make comments as they choose. And staff reviews their plans as well in developing our staff reports. So we do coordinate from a environmental standpoint, everybody kind of has the same rules that they have to play by through de-hec. So Braden has de-hec required, things that they have to do as far as stormwater, and we kind of play under those same rules, so.
I think coordinate is a tough word. I think we share information on projects. I think coordinate would be a stretch because when we look at our own approval rights and our own zoning and our own ordinances, and we're adjacent to county properties, I can't, I know that they get information, but rarely hear anything that says we're coordinating.
I will say, the county's comprehensive plan designation for this area is municipal infill, which basically means the county picks up the phone and they ask what the town has in this area and what the town recommends because it's an area that's surrounded by, you know, town-developed projects, and so they want, that designation essentially is saying they want consistency. So if the county does reach out to the town in areas such as this when a request may come in, and so there is a little bit of coordination perhaps, but maybe a different word should be used there.
Took out the T's. Further questions?
When are we going to be getting a traffic study?
Currently, prior, we're in a, the traffic study is required prior to approval of a plan that would allow the construction of the project. So if it moved forward with approval through council at first and second reading, it would be an approved project, but it could not actually, a shovel couldn't hit the ground until a traffic study was completed and any traffic mitigation was identified and their plan accommodated for such.
And then in turn, we have to go, because we don't have, Pleasant Road isn't one of our roads, and now we're in the county's hand and they can just be like, yeah, you're good, bye.
Yeah.
Chris, I have a question, please. So has a developer already been decided on for this project?
I do believe one of the applicants or someone with the applicant is the future developer for the project.
Okay. If that particular developer sells to another developer, they can make changes?
They could not make changes without coming before town council. They could make minor modifications that wouldn't substantially change the plan, but to substantially change anything about the plan or the conditions, they would have to come back before the planning commission for a recommendation and town council for another approval.
Good job, Councilman Himesaw. We do not any longer wish to approve developments under one set of conditions and then have it sell to someone else that can completely change the look and feel that was presented to us. And as a council, I think, you know, we certainly have an example of that, that we all kind of feel pinched by. So we definitely want to make sure going forward that what we approve is what eventually occurs and not a potential. So thank you for bringing that up, Trudy, that's something that's very near and dear to me, is that we find a way
And myself too, yes.
See what we approve.
So they will have to come back before council if it's a new developer?
Not necessarily just because it would be a new developer, but if a new developer came in and wanted to change the plan, then it would have to come back before you for approval.
So if they wanted to go from patio homes to, I don't know, big boxes, would they have to come back to us?
If they wanted to increase the number of units, if they wanted to remove open space, remove buffers, materially alter the concept plan, that's when it would come back before you.
If they want to decrease the number of units and make them larger?
We'll buy them dinner. Kidding.
I'm not sure if it was to decrease, I don't believe that would be a trigger that would require it to come necessarily before council for reapproval, but it would depend on if something else were to change along with that. It still could come back before you, but it wouldn't necessarily automatically have to, I don't believe.
So there's not a regulatory oversight to say it can only be this many units per acre?
The development conditions limit it to 51 units.
Does that answer your question?
It does not state that it has to be 51 units, but it's
But it couldn't exceed that.
It could not exceed that, correct.
That helped, Trudy?
It answered my question, but I still
I think what you're asking is if 51 units were townhomes and some other developer came in and said 51 units are homes, single-family, then it's likely not to have the same, same distance, it's going to be a different look.
I don't believe they could fit 51 single-family
I mean, but I didn't think they could do what they did either. Yeah, you understand our concern.
I do, absolutely, and it's built in there to where if it's, if it's a change, it's coming back before you for another review.
Okay. Further questions?
So just this, power easement was
distance, it's gonna be a different look.
I don't believe they could fit 51 single family.
I mean, but I didn't think they could do what they did either. Yeah, you understand our concern.
I do, absolutely. And it's built in there to where if it's, if it's a change, it's coming back before you for another review.
Okay. Further questions?
So just this, power easement was wonderful to the planning commission and just put you guys over the top as this great project, and that was it? It really pushed it through?
Well, from staff's perspective, it was a number of things, really the working in conjunction with the existing approval. It added the enhanced requirements that we had for the Pleasant Vista project, the multiple access points. It generally is in compliance with comprehensive plan. So from staff's perspective, we recommended in favor of approval absent that. The planning commission, one of their items that they regularly look into is open space and usable open space. It was one of the items that they absolutely recommended in the UDO to move forward with. And so they, when looking at this, noted that there was not a lot of usable open space and they wanted to see more. And that's, that was one of the items that helped them be okay with it being 5.4 units per acre as opposed to strictly.
I just disagree with it. I mean, that's throwaway land with power lines running up the.
It's not just a power line, though, it's everything below the power line also.
I know that, but power line land, you know.
It does drop through to get to that.
It does, so it is.
Just disagree with that.
It is a connection, and I'm not battling one way or any other for it, but it is a connection to property that's already owned by the Nation For Land Trust, so it's an extension of what the Nation For Land Trust could develop as a trail system.
Could be important to the land trust.
I understand that, but it's power line land.
I think the land they're talking about is not under the power line. You would have to pass through it to get to it, but I think.
Yeah, power lines here.
Yeah.
Right.
And just remember.
Can you spell that up, please, Chris?
Remember, the staff and the planning commission get to look at it from, are they crayons? Not what color are they? You know, they get to decide, is it a box of 64? Are they all red, are they all blue? They go by the rules. But, you know, when it comes to us, we get to have a little bit different perspective and get to decide based on, first the law and then what fits with all the other criteria. Still gotta fit in the box.
That's just a lot of traffic, a lot more traffic to put right there.
Mr. Pettit, the land that is being considered for donation to the trail thread, how many acres was that?
I don't know the exact. So over two acres underneath the south power lines.
Yeah. Thank you.
And the way the development condition is worded, if the Nation For Land Trust wanted all of it, that would satisfy that condition. If they did not want all of it, the remaining portion of it would need to be developed as some sort of usable amenity.
Park.
Somewhere for folks to gather and recreate.
Recreate.
Recreate. Under the power lines. Okay, guys, further questions? There's a motion on the table to approve first reading. I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Do we have three nays?
I think it was four nays.
Please show hands for the nays. Three. Three. Okay. Virginia, did you get that? Thank you.
That was four.
Okay. All right. New business item number five, first reading and ordinance adopting a mixed use concept plan and development conditions for the Pleasant Whitley MXU project. This is the same project. So this one, rather than an annexation, is an ordinance for MXU. So do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number five.
Motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to see an amendment to the development agreement that says it's gonna be townhouse, even though it's not designated as townhouse region.
Would you like to?
To know that is contiguous with what that's already been planned out two years ago.
Would you like to make your motion?
And it doesn't have to be through the, I mean, it could be an addendum to their contract of sale or contract of build through, Chris, I think, couldn't it?
Look, the staff report does not have pages on it, but section two, under permitted uses, the way it's worded today is a maximum of 51 single family attached or detached units may be constructed on the site. So if I understand you correctly, you would prefer that it state a maximum of 51 single family attached units may be constructed on the site. So striking or detached.
Correct.
Would you like to amend your, or change your, or repropose your, come on Barry, give me the right wording here.
Was the motion made to approve?
Yes.
I amend my motion to approve.
Was it seconded?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, I would amend your motion.
I amend my motion for new business item number five to strike that portion of the agreement from, to make it contiguous to attached homes.
Do I have a second for that amended motion? I have a second. All those in favor of the amended motion, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Please raise your hand for a nay vote. Got it, Virginia? Thank you. New business item number six, an ordinance annexing York County tax map number 709000011, located at 762 Nims Lake Road and containing approximately .89 plus or minus acres. This is in Ward four, which is Mr. Moody's Ward. Chris Pettit is our resident expert. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number six.
Have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Chris, would you like to tell us a little bit about this annexation?
Yes, Mayor, this is a request from the property owner to annex into the town limits as R-15 residential. It's actually what's commonly referred to as a donut hole, so the, all the properties around it are within the town limits. This property is the one piece that is not. And they are experiencing some issues with their wealth and would like to hook up to the town utilities. Therefore, they have requested annexation into the town as R-15, which is consistent with the properties surrounding it. And staff recommends in favor of approval and the planning commission has not reviewed this item yet. They will review it at their following next meeting.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of acceptance of new business item number six, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you very much. New business item number seven, first reading and ordinance to adopt the budget for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the fiscal year beginning October the first, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019.
Hi.
Thank you for your presentation earlier.
You're welcome.
I make a motion, we accept new business item number seven.
Second.
All right, I got a motion in a second.
Okay. Mayor, again, this is the first reading for the budget ordinance. Again, the total amount in the budget ordinance for fiscal year 1819 is 59 million, $723,498. And this ordinance has been reviewed by our town attorney.
59 million, 723,498.
$498.
An increase of 2 million.
Didn't you write that?
I just did.
He's taking his shoe off.
Oh, is he? Ooh, get him, Mike.
One year they were discussing federal budget and they sent Eric Duxton, Phil Norris, has a billion here and a billion there soon runs into real money. Our case is a million here and a million there soon run into real money.
Two bucks and we'd have gone up to 500. Okay. Any questions for Shontae on the earlier presentation or the work that has been done on the budget to date? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. It's unanimous. Thank you, Shontae. Do we have a problem?
No, ma'am, I'm waiting on the next one.
Okay, I'm sorry. You do have the next one. New business item number eight, first reading and ordinance to raise revenue by setting the tax mileage for the town of Fort Mill, South Carolina for the tax year ending December 31st, 2018, and for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept new business item number eight.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second? Okay. Anything?
Okay, as we discussed earlier, as part of the recommended budget, that the recommendation was to remain at 86 mils, and that is reflected in the tax mileage ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions for Shontae? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you, Shontae.
Yes, ma'am.
Great work. Information discussion, item number one, unified development ordinance, UDO, and new zoning map. Chris Pettit.
Mayor, just real quickly, I wanted to note that as we discussed at the last meeting, first reading of the UDO and the proposed new zoning map would be on October 8th. That would be first reading in public hearing. That has been advertised as a public hearing, has been posted on our website and at Town Hall. And second reading would be scheduled for October 22nd, which would have a second public hearing. With that, I do want to note additionally that the UDO and zoning map can be viewed online at www.fortmillsc.gov/udo. Or if folks would like to see hard copies of those materials, they can certainly come into Town Hall and view those at Town Hall during normal business hours.
All right. We do not take votes on information items. Does anyone have a question for Chris?
Are we hearing much from developers, builders, anything after all the initial feedback that we were getting?
I haven't gotten anything really outside of just folks curious as to when the date, the effective date would be.
When and if. Thank you for your work on this. I know when you took it over that it was a wee bit behind. So to pull it together and bring it to us and with the expectation of getting it actually on the boards by the end of the year, really good job. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none. As we will move into executive session, we have four items. Executive session, item number one is a discussion on a personnel contractual matter regarding the town attorney. Discussion incident to potential contractual agreement related to Dobie's Bridge Park. Discussion on personnel contractual matter regarding town manager. And discussions incident to proposed contractual agreement with the Fort Mill School District regarding the Aquatic Center. Please note that in executive session, we take no vote. No vote is taken, no vote is awarded. I would like to, before everyone leaves, once again, say thank you to staff for the work. Caroline, thank you for the tips and for putting the things out there on our website for our community. I heard Governor McMaster say today, better safe than sorry. Sounds like a quip, but it's so true. It's so true. More people die from drowning than they do from anything else in regards to storms. So please, don't make it hard on our people and your family. Be safe, don't be sorry. So thank you for everything that you do, and I hope that it's just gonna bring us some fall weather and not some damage. So thank you all for what you do. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Move to move into executive session. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Thank you very much. We will return. I hope. Do I have a motion to return, to come out of executive session?
Make a motion to return.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, do I have a motion to go back into regular session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. I have everybody say aye.
Aye.
No nays. We're back in regular session. Now, we will do, I would like to make a motion that later this week, we will notify our HR manager of the finalists candidates for our town manager position later this week.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. Jamie, I believe you have a motion.
I would like to make a motion to propose to give authority to the manager to move forward with the school board on procurement of the proposed price of the construction obligations incurred at our project at Leroy Springs Complex.
I second that motion. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. All right. Roundtable, Mr. Huntley.
Yesterday, Councilman Ronnie and Chris and I attended Sisk, and they had a, they honored first responders, and it was very, very well done. And they also honored the officer that had been shot.
Detective Dode?
Yeah, they sang a song for him. And it was just very, very well done, and I was proud to be there.
Excellent. Jamie?
I've been missing in action for a couple of weeks here, two months to be exact, and I came back and realized that we have the best staff in all the departments. I've been dealing with Lexington, and they can't get out of their own way. Our guys are on the ball on all aspects, all pists and firing. So thank you for all the work that you guys do. I know it's not easy to be out there, and I know that you'd probably get the raw end of stuff sometimes, but we really do appreciate everything.
Trudy?
I was gonna say that I was unable to go to Sisk yesterday for their, for their special event. I did attend last year and was very impressed with everything they did. When I called to regret last week, I told Melissa, I think was her name in the office, that Chip and I already had plans for Sunday. Actually, we were ushering at our church, but our anniversary is next week, and so we had put flowers in church as well. So we wanted to go to church to see those. And in case anybody's interested, we'll be celebrating number 53 on the 18th, so.
There you go. Congratulations.
And the other thing that I would like to say is remember that tomorrow is 9/11. And that we need to remember the folks that, for everything that happened that day, and for those who are still suffering the consequences from that day. Hear about or see, I've been reading about several different disease that have actually come out, I guess, from the smoke. And it's really, it's really been devastating to some families.
Thank you, Trudy. Ronnie?
I actually had the chance to go to church four times yesterday.
Well, maybe you needed to go four times, Ronnie. You reckon?
We had church at our service, then at Sisk Memorial, and then a funeral, and then back to church last night, so I'm well taken care of. I just wanted to say, along with the mayor and council, thank you staff for all you're doing. Appreciate every effort. Chip, appreciate the job you're doing foreseeing another Hugo in this area. I slept through the last one, my wife kept trying to get me up and say, you didn't come see these pretty lights, and there were transformers blowing up everywhere. I said, leave me alone, I'm trying to get some sleep.
All right. I would like to remind everyone that Caroline and our town staff and Brown, those guys work very hard to give us fun things to do in our community. So we have fall events coming. Downtown Fort Mill, October the 13th through the 31st, one of the most fun events of the year is the scarecrow contest. Lots of people gotten involved in this. I have seen some true works of art and some creativity that just goes beyond fun. So by all means, there'll be more than 40 scarecrows downtown. That's gonna be a lot of fun. The Fort Mill Fire Department Open House, I gotta tell you, nothing says small town America like last year when I drove by this open house. It was beautiful. It was just a beautiful thing to see the work that our firemen, they do every day, but then they take time out so that they can provide to the community an opportunity to firsthand touch a fire truck or, you know, have some games, see what it's all about to protect the community. Lot of fun. So by all means, if you have an opportunity, October the 13th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., to join our great fire department. They're just wonderful people and they'd love to see you. Then if you want safety, on October the 31st, we've got your trick or treat on Main Street, sponsored by Founders. From 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., you've got trick or treating, music, costume contests, scarecrow winners announced. It's a free event. There are lots of opportunities for children to have a safe. It's a free event. There are lots of opportunities for children to have a safe chance to see other costumes and enjoy the festivities on the thirty-first. Brown Public Works, Fire Department, Police Department, and Caroline Hasty get a lot of work in, in the fall. Then, of course, we've got Veterans Day Ceremony. There's no way we could make it through the year without thanking our veterans for everything they do for us. That's Friday, November the ninth, at ten a.m. in Veterans Park, North White Street. You can find all of these events, because we'll turn into the Christmas one soon, on our website along with some tips and safety advice on hurricane preparedness. Because even if the hurricane is not Hugo-esque, look that up, see if it's worded, we certainly can experience the tropical force winds. We can experience tornadoes. We can experience high water in the streets. And you want to be safe and be prepared, have all your medications refilled, make sure your pets are cared for, your relatives, your neighbors that might not be able to take care of themselves. So let's, let's try to help our first responders out by doing what we can to be prepared for this event and pray that it doesn't harm anyone. Nine eleven, least we ever forget, nine eleven and the people that perished. And once again, before we do our adjournment, I can't thank my council members enough. Guys, it's sort of some days like making sausage, you know. It can be just absolutely, you have no clue what it's going to be. But I wouldn't want to do it with anybody else. So thank you so much for your efforts, your dedication and your loyalty to our community.
Let me add too. I was at Lowe's today and my niece works up there and she said it's been crazy. They sold out of water. They ordered another truckload of water. They sold out of generators. They sold out of flashlights. They sold out of batteries. And the grocery store went no better.
Yeah, I was at Sam's today for the same reasons and guys, be kind to one another. You know, we're all in this world together whether you like it or not. Be kind to one another. It, it really matters. I thought there was going to be a stampede for one pallet of water. Be kind to one another. And with that, I'll entertain an adjournment motion.
I make the motion.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and a second. Everybody say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're done.